This conference will now be recorded.
So where are we with regard to attendance and stuff?
Well, we have, yeah, we have four. I know.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Cool. It's seven o'clock and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Again, we'll, oh, we'll call.
Thanks. Commissioner Berlin?
Here.
Commissioner Lassen?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Corning?
Here.
Chair Piper?
Here.
And I heard from Vice Chair Bandola that she could not attend this evening.
All right. We'll dispense with the flag salute. In the packet are the minutes for our November 12. That sounds right. January 14th.
Yep.
Which is our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. There's no one here, so I can't imagine there's any business from the audience. Communications?
None.
So we're going to do staff training, but what are we going to chat about Monday?
I can do it at the end, but I do update from staff.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll talk about a couple of the minor projects.
Take it away.
Thank you very much. So I thought I would walk through. This is a training that I've been doing, a few of these for the city council. So the slides that I'm going to kind of go through are, may have some counselor references in. But I think they're a good idea. We have a few new counselors and, as I was saying before, we actually have some counselors who I didn't even get to sort of sit and meet with because of COVID. And what I did was I put together, this is just a slide presentation, but then I have a small package, a little binder, I think each have up here. I'll make sure that everybody gets one at home. Not overly complicated. And it's basically, I wanted to go through and talk about, for some of you, this is going to be old news. You're going to be very familiar, but I'll bet you still pick up something from it. Believe me, Oregon land use is complicated, extremely complicated. I learn new things all the time with new case law and new decisions come down. Same with Dan, we're constantly tracking statutes, how they affect us, how we have to stand our toes. And I think it's worthwhile going through this. It's not too long, I think I can get through the whole thing in about 45 minutes. Feel free to jump in and ask questions. From my view, I can't actually see you, Commissioner Lassen, but I think it's okay if he wants to, has a question, I want to speak up. Or McKenzie, she's here as well. I strongly encourage the attorney to speak up and let me know when I've misspoken. And the same with Dan, if that's all right. Let me just give you kind of an overview of what I'm going to talk about. Again, my, I could probably talk for about, I swear I can keep this at 35 minutes, so with a few interruptions, maybe 45, 50 tops. That's my goal. And I've shortened it for everybody, you'd be glad to know. I do think it's important to always go back and think about the reason we have the Oregon land use system, because it, that really leads to the reason we have, we have these, some of these sort of Byzantine rules that we apply. But there is a purpose behind it, and it's a good purpose, and it makes sense. Then I'm going to talk about our specific land use process, making sure we make fair legally defensible decisions. We've been making a lot of decisions, quasi judicial land use decisions recently. Knock on wood, we have not had any decisions go to Luba. We'll talk about what Luba is and who they are, for those of you who don't know, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals. I think that's a good thing. I think the city's been making good legally defensible decisions. If we weren't, we would be challenged and we could possibly lose, and there's bad ramifications to that. And at the end, I want to just touch on the development ordinance, our zoning code. I'm not going to get into a ton of detail on it, but I think it's important to understand the processes that are in it. I think this would be, I hope this will be valuable for you. And of course, I'm going to be pointing out as many pitfalls as I can, just based on my experience doing this. I think most, you know, I've been doing this for prevalent land use for, I hate to say 20 years now. I spent probably six or, I probably spent six of them on the private sector. I've worked for a couple of different municipalities. I've worked on, I've worked in the private sector representing municipalities, representing counties, in both in Florida and here in Oregon. So I have a pretty wide breadth of experience. My Oregon land use experience, I'm probably 10 years into it here now, something like that. Again, and Oregon is different and complicated. This is Tom McCall, Republican Governor of Oregon. And I'm going to read this speech because this is what, this was the kind of the, again, this gets to the backbone of what the political impetus was for, why we have our laws. I'll read some of this. This is his opening address to the legislature. He's away with words. He says, "There is a shameless threat to our environment and to the whole quality of life, an unfettered despoiling of the land. Sagebrush subdivisions, coastal condominiums, the ravenous rampage of suburbia in the Willamette Valley all threaten to mock Oregon's status as the environmental model for the nation." This was really due to the fact that we were getting, that we think of Californication as a newer term. This was coming then, right? This was, we were getting a lot of subdivisions building up the Willamette Valley. And there was concern across the board that Oregon was losing its natural areas, right? This was, it was, some of it was we're losing farmland, particularly this very important special farmland we have in the Willamette Valley. And the rest were our natural areas. And it was starting to look different. We're starting to look like this just big suburbanized sprawl that I call, that was here, thought of as this Californization that you get. And this was the pushback. So there are a series of statutes and laws and rules were passed. And because of, generally because of the leadership of Tom McCall and a lot of other people, and what was going on in the Willamette Valley and that, that big population and growth burst of housing you were getting. You had this urban rural divide and this issue of we were losing these rural places and just becoming this massive area of suburb. And the concern was it was really going to grow. And that led to what we call SB, it's a Senate Bill 100. And when you think about the Oregon land use system and what makes it unique, again, I've worked in other states. And this was very original. This was a new thing. Oregon and Florida both came up with this almost at the exact same time, this top-down system. The state's going to establish these overall arching goals, and they're going to force a requirement on local jurisdictions to meet those requirements. So when I come in and I say, as I'm going to in a few weeks or in a few months, the state has given us a dictate and told us we're going to have to put in more middle housing and townhouses in our single-family areas. It's because we are in a top-down system where these rules or requirements come from the top. I'll talk more about it in a second. Yeah.
Oh, I was just wondering, is it only Florida and Oregon now?
No, it's grown. Those are the first two. Hawaii picked it up, New Jersey, Dan's younger than me, he's been in school more recently. Now it's probably a dozen or so states, but they don't have the enforcement mechanism. That's what's different about Oregon. They control the purse strings of the state, right? Which is a big deal. I, in Florida, I can tell you, they have an almost mirror image of the system. They have different names, it's called DCA, it's the DLC, et cetera, et cetera. They have comprehensive plans, they have, they have, they even have a regional planning organization. Here it's Metro and some of these other cities have larger ones. Metro has teeth, Metro taxes people, they withhold dollars here in Oregon. In other states, those metropolitan planning organizations don't have that kind of support financially or legally. So they don't have the teeth, so they can't really, they can't push for the environmental rules and regulations that we have here.
What teeth do they have? They just refuse to let things happen?
They officially are the ones who disperse transportation dollar, but they don't get into land use as much. Think of, Metro is a good example here. Think of the power that Metro has here in the state of Oregon. I mean, the organization, Metro was originally, as you know, like the, basically ran the zoo, right? And now they're like this massive government body that influences everybody's lives. That's part and parcel with this system. One of the, so these are the things that were created in 70, they committed the commission and department. These are the state departments. Remember, there was no state planning department at some time before this. This is DLCD and LCDC, but you don't have to know too many acronyms. You're always familiar, we quote OARS here all the time and RRS. You don't know, those are Oregon statutes, or I statutes and administrative rules. These are the laws that the state establishes. So the state came up with, Dan, 19 goals, 21 goals? Somewhere in there, 21 overall state goals, right? They're very broad, they're general, land use, economic development, protection of environmental areas, transportation, just big kind of numbers. They're all deal with land use. And I'll explain why those are important in a sec. They created shortly thereafter the Land Use Board of Appeals. In most states, if you have a, if someone doesn't like the decision made by this city, a land use decision, they have to go to court. Is it Circuit Court, McKenzie, always?
Yes, Circuit.
Yes, Circuit Court.
Here you don't do that. And the problem is, then you're, then you're kind of stuck in line. It takes a long time to get through Circuit Court. You're dealing with a judge who deals with, right, very different issues. They don't understand these complexities of Oregon land use. So here they say, we're going to create a separate board, and these are basically land use attorneys. Three-member board, sit and sail. And they hear these cases, they hear appeals. So you can quickly get from a developer can say, oh man, I got an approval, or I got denied, whatever the case is. And they can take it to this Board of Appeals very quickly from people who understand these rules very specifically geared towards them. And they can make, they make their decisions pretty quick. And they're very, if you ever want to read them, you can always go on. I read them constantly, just to kind of stay with, keep up with what's going on. But they're written in very plain English. They're not written in complicated lawyeries. You don't have to know that much about land use to follow these cases. We haven't had one here in quite a bit. We actually had a case that was going to go to the, going to go to Luba regarding, I guess a planning director decision that I made about the, called COVID Hotel, the hotel up the road that was being used for the COVID facility. That was appealed to Luba, the Luba Board. That case just got dismissed this week. So it didn't go anywhere. Often cases get dismissed. So it's, I think it's interesting, as I was saying before, we haven't had one go to Luba here, and I think that's a good thing. I don't want cases to go to Luba. They can, anybody can file an appeal. In any case, it's always better if we do go to Luba, at least we win, or gets our decision gets sustained. When I talk about the idea of this top-down system, it's this, I have in here consistent local plans and ordinances. It's important to understand this, our comprehensive plan that we have, I'll talk for a second about what's in it. Our general growth plan for the city mirrors those state goals. Each chapter of our comprehensive plan is essentially the exact same chapter of a state goal. Because every time we touch that comprehensive plan and edit one word in it, or adopt, say, a transportation system plan, or housing needs analysis, or any of these documents, they get reviewed by the state for consistency. Are you meeting all the state goals and state requirements? And they have time to appeal it, and believe me, they always comment to us and let us know how they look beforehand. We're required by law to meet them. That, that's kind of a heavy hand that the state has on everything we do here. If we were to write in here that we don't want to have any more multifamily housing in town because we think we have enough, they will crack the whip and say, you cannot do that, you're going to change that, and they won't allow that to be adopted. They have that legal ability, because.
What's the criteria?
We have to be consistent with the state goals and all state statutes and ordinances. And, I'm sorry. Right, every single city has to do that. That's correct. They have their own. Well, they might make them slightly different for larger and smaller cities. And occasionally they have a one-off for Metro because they're very unique and they have their own little enterprise up there. But for the vast majority of cities, they're the same. Ours are going to be the same as Kaiser, the same as McMinnville and these other kinds of cities, you know, Oregon City. This just, this is a graphic that I always play around with. I have been for a long, long time trying to demonstrate how this overall system works. Maybe it doesn't do well. Overall planning goals, state administrative rules, these agencies who play in the middle, this is the state watching us. If you want to appeal to Luba, if you want to appeal to Andrew's decision, it goes here. The state's always watching what we do. We have legally binding comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan, we don't just get to change it willy-nilly. It gets reviewed and it's technically called an acknowledged plan. Otherwise, it wouldn't have any legal standing. Acknowledged means the city, the state's looked at it and said, yep, it meets our requirements, you're golden.
So we write it and then we present it for it to be approved and then.
That's exactly right. Yep, that's how it works. Underneath all these wonderful things are our local ordinances. Think your WDO and your zoning code and our public work standards. All those things are at the bottom of this pile. So our local ordinances have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. Decisions we make at the zoning level, any change we make to our zoning code, gets reviewed against our comprehensive plan. The rationale is that our comprehensive plan's already been acknowledged as meeting all the state goals, state administrative rules and statute. So by making a change locally, if it's consistent with our plan, it will meet all state requirements. That's the theory anyway, but that gives you this top-down, it's a, conceptually, it's a really good idea. It creates this predictability in developments for the neighbors know how development's going to occur locally and around us, and developers have an idea what's going to happen. And we'll talk about all the different ways that the procedures are set up to have fair and open hearings. We do that here for a reason. It's a good reason. I'll be the first one to, I have lots of issues with the way these things are administered, and they kind of tie our hands too much, et cetera, et cetera. But I like the overall purpose. It is important, it is the right way to do things. I've worked in states where it doesn't work this way, and it's awful. People are getting bribed, you never know who's going to get an approval. I used to work in Florida where I can assure you, if the city council didn't like a project that walked in, they would give instructions to staff to let it sit on a desk and it never moved. And so they went away. That's terrible. That's an awful way to do business. Here we have things called clocks that run, you're all familiar with it, where we have to deal with it, we have to address. That's a good thing. That's the reason those are in place. Think of the comp plan as a, I won't read all this. It's, it's the constitution for our city. I like the way that's written. From a land use perspective, it's like our state or federal constitution. It's the framework and long-term vision for our plan. Let me jump in for a second. So that comprehensive plan includes storm drainage master plan, transportation system plan. We do special area plans. You know, we have a Mill Creek, what's it called, open space plan or trail plan. So we have little sub-area plans, we have the historic district has its own area that we plan for. There's a transportation system, I come to this one a lot because it's, it's probably, it's probably the most important element of our comprehensive plan. You all did approve this, I want to say 18 months ago, maybe a year ago or so. Just to give you an example, what's in, say, the transportation system plan, which is an element of our comprehensive plan? It looks at roads that need to be improved, right? So in this example, you can see R24, this is just one page out of the transportation system plan. This is Woodland, Woodland comes down here, makes a, this is where the church is, just north of here. Do-It-Fest is over here to the east. This road doesn't exist out to Buveville, but it's a very important connection we want to see happen, right? Up, when this, when the, the, this property was recently annexed into the city, this is the spec property out here.
That's on the west side of the freeway?
Yeah, I'm so, I'm sorry, this is I-5. Yeah, where this is the mall to the north. Oh, this is Buveville on this end, forgive me. And yeah, this is the church on this end. So Woodland comes out right now at dead end. Our transportation system plan does this very complicated modeling to figure out how to best move people around in various ways, whether it's transit, bike, et cetera. But most importantly, it's about vehicles. That's probably the most expensive numbers are. This connection is really important for the city's long-term planning vision, right? It helps make these properties more valuable, these industrial properties. It alleviates a ton of the traffic pressure at this intersection, which is terrible, that's going to have to be at some point in time fixed, going to need some kind of light or roundabout, we're working on that right now. That's the Buveville 219 interchange. So this is called out in the TSP as a plan that we're going to, at some point, put in place. We have it called out in the plan as the Woodland Avenue Extension, it's a new roadway. We have it to medium, I think that's called importance, I can't remember the exact title for it. And then we put a dollar cost on it. It's not perfect, it's an estimate of what we think it's going to cost to extend that road. When development comes in on this property out here to the west, we're going to open this plan, because hopefully there's a tie in our zoning code that says, we look to these things. And this is an important connection we need to see made, it's in our plan. And we're going to need them, before they probably do this, because it's going, in this case, it's going to cut through their property, they're probably going to wind up putting this extension right through their site. All right? They may not pay all the costs, we haven't figured that out yet, we're not at that point yet. But having it on this plan, having a long-term vision for how you're going to design, we have plans for this, it's critical, and it's what makes everything work. We have it for water, sewers, storm, parks, transportation, you name it. We have this exact same plan, talks about how we're going to grow. It's not perfect.
And it goes 20 years, is that it?
Some go 35 years, is that right, Dan? Counting on you to call on this, 25 years. They vary, and they get updated probably every five years or so. I won't spend too much more time on the comprehensive plan. Just, I want you to understand, these are the various elements that are examples of what's in it. We've got a parks and recreation plan, says, these are the kind of parks we want in our city. They're going to be active, passive, large, small, community, neighborhood, regional, here's where we want to put them. And they even talk about generally how we're going to pay for it. Again, I see a water master plan, environmental resources, here's how we're going to protect them, these are the important waterways, Mill Creek in this way gets these kinds of protections. The comprehensive plan doesn't say it's going to be, we're going to have a 50-foot buffer on top of the outside of the wetland next to Mill Creek where it abuts Hay Street. It doesn't say anything like that. Or Lincoln. What it does is it gives these bigger goals. We want to protect these areas, make sure that we have a plan to do it, and what's most important to us is that they be protected as well as allowing for, say, development of adjacent property. Be some kind of goal like that in a policy. Where the rubber meets the road is in our development ordinance. And when we see these applications, I mean, that's where you all come into play. You're at this kind of, the end of the rung where I call it the rubber meets the road. You all get to make those harder decisions. I don't mind telling you, it's a lot easier in a comprehensive, a long-range comprehensive plan to say, it's really important for a road to blow right through there, because that's our new South Arterio, right? We have a plan for our South Arterio that runs along basically the south end of the property. It's very important, we need more east-west connections in this town. It'll alleviate our traffic problems out here on Settlemar. We've got, I've got $250,000 in traffic studies that'll tell me that, but you don't need them to see them. You know that's the case. We need different ways to get east and west in town. And it's easy to put that on a plan. It's much harder when someone comes in for an application to say, I need you to give up 60 feet of your property along the whole north, north property line, because that's important for our long-term goal. But it is. So this is my, I'll put in a few asides, this is my defending staff. When you occasionally see us say, this is a really important connection, it's in our transportation system plan, or this, this trail connection is part of an overall plan. And if you let this developer come through and not put in that easement and not dedicate that land, we lose the opportunity for that to ever happen again. And it blows a hole in some of these plans. We don't make these willy-nilly, like, wouldn't it be nice, right? That's kind of a nice spot, that's a good idea. We look on these plans and it says, the water master plan says we need a big major honkin' water line, it's got to run through there. So I need a wider easement on that property. You know, like, I'm not giving you a wider easement on my property. So we need to rely on these plans, which have been vetted. These go through a very long, detailed process. That, I want you to kind of understand how that interplay of comprehensive plan and the zoning code work. Because it does make some hard decisions. These aren't easy decisions that you all make at all. And we, we're that kind of, we're the front line of making those kind of recommendations for you. But they aren't made in the dark, and they aren't made, I can assure you, just, yeah, that would be a great place for a road. That never works that way. And then we, we'll talk for a minute about what it means with how we get there, which is making these fair and legally defensible decisions. This is what you do every night, or every time you have a quasi judicial decision or a legislative decision. Because this is sort, this is also my, I do a slightly different presentation for the council. They have a slightly different legislative role. But it's, you all know this, and if you don't, we'll remind you. You're going to take, the actions that you take are either going to be a legislative decision or a quasi judicial decision. These are the two hats you wear. You're going to be wearing one or the other, we have different processes, you have different criteria, we have different notice requirements, they're different animals. A legislative item is something that you make a recommendation of. And that means, it's called citywide policies, regulations, it's not that complicated. When we want to amend our comprehensive plan, or we want to amend our zoning code, or you want, or someone wants to annex property, these are big policy, statewide or citywide policies that are impacted. And if you're going to write laws, in terms of land use, the state requires it to go to this body first. The planning commission must make a recommendation on every TSP, every zoning code change, every policy, every citywide change, like an annexation, has to come to you first for a recommendation. But only the city council can do that, and that makes sense. You all can't make laws, the city council's chartered to do that, or entitled to do that under the charter. So for legislative items, and well, again, we tell you when they are, this isn't the typical development. You still have to do the, you have to have your review, hold your hearing, and you make a recommendation. Counselor does it, formally makes the adoption. They can change their, they can take your recommendation and throw it to garbage, don't feel bad. Sometimes they do that. They do that all the time to staff, we don't feel bad about it. We don't, by the way, I always reiterate to everybody, and I apologize if I'm jumping around. I always, I always want to remind the planning commissioners, staff makes recommendations that we're proud of, we take a lot of pride in them, we spend a lot of time on them, our conditions of approval. If you feel like making a different recommendation or modifying condition, do not feel bad about it. All right? Our job is not to push things through like that, it's to make the best recommendation we can to you, and, and give you the best advice and best professional advice we can, to support it or not. And as soon as you say, that's a bad condition, I'm on a different condition and a different finding, we will write a different finding to meet your needs. That's our job. All right? Same deal with the city council. That's what we do. Again, examples of legislative changes, these are text amendments, new comprehensive plan edits, and those subsidiary plans. Now the big ones, the juicier ones, the ones you do most of your work on, and where you have the most, by far the most influence, quasi judicial actions. It's just like a judge, just like it looks like. I think of it as much like a jury as much as a judge, is the way you act. You're sort of hearing testimony and you're making a decision. The chair acts a little bit more like a judge. In this case, he's physically pounds a gavel, opens and closes things, determines what kind of testimony can come in, et cetera, et cetera. But a lot, most, a big majority of roles is much like a jury. You're applying regulations to a specific property, applying the code. You're not making them up willy-nilly, you're applying what's in that zoning code to a particular case based on the information that came in. Oops. And that's the vast majority of what you do, design reviews, variances, site plans, land unit developments. They're oftentimes wrapped in with an annexation or rezoning. In that case, your, your, your decisions become recommendations, but you still take, you still follow the same process here. The unique procedures for quasi judicial, you all know most of them because you've been through them a lot. I'll go over them again, if you have questions about them, ask me. I'll go through them a little bit quicker than I would with sort of the first-time counselor. I'm going to start with what I love, this is my absolute favorite quote. It's from a famous case called Fasano versus Washington County. Because this quote from late 70s, mid 70s, McKenzie, you can jump in somewhere in there.
That's about right.
It covers, it covers the reason we, the reason we have these strict rules and the protections that it puts in place. This is the goal of these, these hearings. The parties at the hearing, when we have a quasi judicial hearing on a case, are entitled to an opportunity to be heard, right? That means everybody that wants to speak can speak. It means we have to give a notice to people and let them know where the meeting is, what time it's starting, what the criteria is, where they can get information, how they can review the staff report. That all makes sense, that's fair. An opportunity to present and rebut evidence. They all get to get up and talk, or give us an email, or send us a letter, and everybody gets a chance to rebut evidence. The evidence is here, and they get to rebut it. This is why occasionally I see us jump in and say, oh, new evidence has come in. Stop, go back, does anybody here want to rebut new evidence that walked in the door? That's the reason we have to do it, and that is fair. To a tribunal that's impartial to the matter, you can't be biased, we'll talk about that in a second. You can't have pre-hearing or ex parte contacts, I'll give more details in a second. And, and the record has, and a record has to be made, and findings executed. I can't hide it, it's all out in the open. We have a silly statement where we say somewhere in the presentation, and we're hereby putting the file, fifth file into the official records. We do that for this reason, because that file, it's this thick, is officially the record, right? And everybody has a chance to look at it. Joe Public can come in and see it. We can't hide it. I can assure you, that's not the case in other places. They don't make their decisions as much out in the open as you would think. I'm going to go over some legalese, McKenzie, please feel free to jump in. I'm going to cover some, you all, I think you're all familiar with them, so I'm going to read them kind of quickly. This is some of the Latin and the other legal fun stuff. So decisions have to be based on the testimony and evidence, it's part of the record. Very simple concept. You can't come in here and say, I drove by the site and I noticed that there was a homeless person living there, and I really want to see this site get redeveloped. Or I drove by the site and I thought it was wet, and I thought I saw a creek in the back that nobody in here knows about, so I'm going to deny the project. You can't do that. You can't base your decision on any evidence that isn't found in this room as part of the record. Everybody needs to know what you're thinking about. Everybody. Right down to many famous cases, you can't sit here and take notes and pass them back and forth. What are you talking about up there? You're not allowed to do that.
So if we have information aside from what's presented?
Yeah.
We can't use it?
I'll talk about what you do when you do. You need to just disclose it. You need to say, I drove by the site, which is why we have this great board, which is why we run through these rules. Every city does this, this isn't our rules. They all go through this exact same process. You need to say, I have some potential conflicts of interest. What's a conflict of interest? I thought I had them on this slide, I'm sorry. Let's quickly, let me quickly go over ex parte contact, which is contacts and any information you get outside of the rooms. the rooms. Someone sends you an email. It's fine. Just share it with everybody. Give it to staff and we make it part of the record. Cause the public has a right to know, whether it's the applicant developer or a next door neighbor. That you've got an email and you're making a decision on something. They get to see, they get to rebut that evidence. It's perfectly fair. It's hard. It's hard to keep those things in line and to run these, these meetings, especially when they get complicated.
And some of this includes our personal feelings and beliefs in the sense that I feel strongly about this piece of property. I want it to stay natural or I want to see it developed. We can't bring those thoughts and processes to the table and make them part of our individual basis for, for making our decision.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Unless somebody comes along, if someone from the public would say, you know, I've walked my dog on that piece of property for the last 20 years and I don't want to see it developed.
Yeah.
Then we can respond to that.
Right.
And make a basis of that. But we can't, we can't say that. Or, or more importantly, not say it and, and vote
Right.
with that as, as a, as a portion of our decision.
So I have up here a line, uh, it's a, I know there's a lot of text up here. I don't typically put lots of text up. About what a bias is, a predisposition rendering it impossible to make a decision based on the evidence and argument. Um, if you're predis, predisposed to not like a project or to like a project or developer. If you think Walmart's terrible and mistreats their employees and they come in for an expansion and you're like, I can't stand that place. I want them to go out of business. Right? You're thinking it, right? You just personally, you just don't like. Or maybe you think they're the greatest thing in the world and we, they'll do anything, you'll bend over and I don't care what they present. This thing's getting approved. We need more jobs. You can't do that. You have now made your decision before you've even walked in the door. Right? If you have that, no crime. You just stand up and say, I can, and I've been in many cases where this has happened. I got a bias. I'm telling you right now, I like that company or I hate that company. I'm not going to be impartial. So I'm stepping down. That's your job. It's your job not to do that, just to be fair. There's conflicts of interest where you're required by law to step down. Right? If you have a junior, financial interest or a family member has a financial interest, up or down, you're going to make or lose money. You're not allowed to be, you're not allowed to sit up there legally. The other ones are more nuanced. What's the expression? You can't like read someone's mind. I might think Charlie can't stand Walmart, but what, but you know, but I don't really know. It's, it's really up to Charlie to say, yep, I know, I, I, I have a bias. I, I can't do this. And people have the right to question you. And we haven't had that, I don't think recently. It's, it's been a while.
First, sorry, first, sorry. In the time that I've been in the city that's actually stood up and tried to challenge a commissioner's disclosure.
Don't feel bad if they do. Right? Oftentimes, a lot of these are, look, I, I call this stuff Byzantine. This stuff is complicated. I, I, one of my big gripes about the Oregon land use system is it's too complicated for regular Joe to understand. Whether he's a small developer or it's just a next door neighbor. You know who understands this stuff? Land use attorney. Big developers. They know how this system works. So when we get an attorney here, you're much more likely to have someone say, with all due respect, I'm officially putting on the record, the idea that I think, you know, Council Corning, didn't disclose the discussion she had with a neighbor because I talked to a neighbor and she said, yeah, they talk about this once in a while and they overheard this, this conversation. Um, and they don't think that you should be able to testify. They need to do that to preserve their right to appeal it later. And they'll do this a lot, or they'll say, I think that person has a bias. Um, they need to do that legally. If they don't do it then, they don't get to come back later at Luba. Right? If it ultimately gets appealed and say, ah, I had this evidence right here. I knew Council Commissioner Corning was biased. But I just presenting it now, they'll say it's too late.
So is it smart though to then dismiss that commissioner so you protect your decision if you have?
I, I can only give you every, only a commissioner can make that decision if there's not a legal reason or a financial reason for them to step aside. Um, what ultimately what happened is if it got hairy and it was like, boy, that person looks really guilty. Someone raised it and that person says, I don't care. I'm still voting. My understanding, we have rules on this. You can correct me, Mackenzie, is the other commissioners get to vote on whether or not they believe that person can testify. All right? Again, rare that would come there, but just know that it's there. Uh, I'm, I can skip this. You know that we have, uh, we do a very, we, we protect the record because the record's really important. It's, um, it's, again, it's very complicated and hard for us to work through. Just understand that's the reason we go through this exact procedure. We could technically get rid of the in favor and against. Uh, we could just have testimony from the public. Other than that, this public hearing statement is the exact set of rules that everybody has to follow. And they're really important. Don't take them lightly. We, the last thing we ever want to do is get burned. And have something come back and appeal because we missed something. Uh, let's see. Uh, I think I can skip over some of the findings. The findings are, we always have, our staff report consists of, we try to write a really good executive summary to make it clear. And we've changed these sort of since I've been here. I try to make a short, simple executive summary. Here's the project. Here's the recommendation. Here's the conditions of approval. Right? And then behind it is all the massive stuff that you can read through. I encourage you to, please do. Um, all the way down to the applicant's testimony. I want to talk for a second on conditions of approval because this is where another one of these rubber meets the road issues. The law is really clear about conditions of approval and it's easy to go a little sideways and add to them. But this is what's required. A condition of approval has to be related to a specific code criteria and appropriate under one of those scenarios. Either it ensures that an applicable, an applicable approval standard is necessary to, to be, for it to be met. So I give the example of, we have a standard for say, conditional uses. It says you have to be, says something about compatibility and not adversely impacting your neighbor due to your use. You can apply, the city can apply condition of approval for more screening. Or to move the building back, or to get the parking out of their way. Or to add more landscaping, or to lower the building. Um, these kinds of things. That's a legitimate condition of approval because it's tied directly to a criteria that says, I'm tying it to compatibility. If a, as for example, you were to get a large industrial building that was coming in, met all the code criteria. And it was allowable under the district, in the, in that district, right? We, we allow big box industrial buildings in our large lot industrial zoning district. And you say, I think that thing's too big. Right? You're really overpowering that small church next door. The answer is you can't put a condition of approval on that because there's no criteria. That guy has the right, that developer has the right to build it to a certain height. You can't tell them no. If that sounds harsh, it isn't. It gets back to this idea of predictability in planning. We have a long-range plan and we have a zoning code that says, this gives people the right to develop their property in this way. I skimmed over this a little bit. But I think it matters to a lot of people. It gets to this urban rural divide. One of the most incredible things about Oregon. And everybody notices it when they leave is that you know, as soon as you leave a city and I can be in a natural farm area in two minutes. Right? In Oregon, there's a firm line. It's an urban growth boundary that we have. And it's like, how did I suddenly get into farmland? Dan shaking his head. Most, you know how this is. You drive somewhere and it's like, it's just endless subdivision after subdivision after city, after strip mall. You can be in Phoenix and drive for days and never get out of that area. Nothing's big and nothing's small and it's just sprawling everywhere. You don't have that here. Um, you have a protected natural areas, which are rural, and then you have areas that are urban. There is no in-between. Your urban areas are designed to be developed. We've had John Morgan come in and talk. He's got a great line, which is real. John Morgan's a land use planner, been working for a long, long time. He does a lot of training. Very wise. Um, smart guy. And he's got a, he works in lots of different cities. He has a really good line. He goes, look, the job of a planner in the county is to say no to development when it walks in the door. And say no to an application to develop your property. And the job of a planner and within an urban growth boundary in a city is to say yes, when an application walks in the door. That's true. That, the predictability is Woodburn has a plan to be developed. We have natural areas. We have areas to be protected. We have high and low density, et cetera. But it doesn't mean that we're supposed to have farming in the city of Woodburn. Those areas are designed to be annexed and to be developed. There's a really good reason. It's so that we can protect all the other areas that are outside the urban. Those rural areas get protected. All those natural areas and natural features around us get protected because we build it inside. That is not easy. Don't kid yourself. It creates all kinds of issues and strife. I, I know it's a bit of a side, but I'm sorry, I skimmed over it earlier.
So I have one question.
Yeah.
So in the seventies, did everyone, someone decided the boundaries of every city, like say Aurora, which is very small. Is, at some point that they have to?
Oh, you have a question. I do not know the answer to. I'm sorry. I
Yes.
And, and, and I know that because that's how fire districts were formed.
Oh. These were probably based on service districts. You're right, Charlie.
Well, for example, back in the day, well, today, the Woodburn Fire District is made up of a city of Woodburn. City of Jervis. We have a station at Wakanda and we want it brought in. Back in the day, when all this started, when all of this started, the, the neighbors in, in Wakanda came together, built a pole building, went out, found a fire engine, put it in there. And someplace along in there, there were boundary commissions that got together. In fact, when I joined the fire district back in the early eighties, Woodburn and Hubbard were at war. Were absolutely at war. And the reason I found, nobody knew why. But the reason I found out later was because I happened to live next to a fellow by the name of Joe Sola at the time, who was the fire chief of Woodburn in the late sixties and early seventies. And what happened was the fire chief at Hubbard couldn't attend the boundary commission meeting. And so he told the guy, the chief from Aurora and the chief from Woodburn to take care of it. And if you look at those, at, at the Hubbard district, it's a postage stamp. But think about it. That boundary commission and where those lines got drawn was money.
Oh, wow.
If it was in your district, then you taxed it. If it was in the neighbor's district, you couldn't tax it. And that's how I happen to know that is because talking over the fence with Joe Sola and him laughing again, hell, we took care of him all right. You know?
Was somehow involved. I'm not sure she actually was on one, but I know she was involved in that, some of that she, she's mentioned.
She, she very well could have been. She may know more.
I know it happened around the seventies.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's when McCall came along and said, you know, we're going to put in, they called it in those days, LCDC.
Yeah. It's so LCDC is the state commission. The staff underneath them that we deal with is DLCD. That's the Department of Land Management.
And, and in fact, my dad was on a lot of those commissions. He was on county or the state or the district commission. He, we, oh, I remember about it because I was pretty young was, he got stuff from the state and it'd come in and he'd read it and then he'd go off to a meeting. I'd love to be able to ask him about it now.
Uh, boundary commission just went away maybe 10 years ago, pretty fairly recently. Um, they were still around and they made these decisions about every annexation.
Everything got divided up.
Yeah.
And now it belongs to somebody. You know?
It does. I, and I don't mind taking, I think, I hope it's a helpful aside. We talk about the urban growth boundary. I think you're all more familiar. Again, I slightly different presentation for councils, for new councils, but the urban growth boundary is the area that we are intended to grow into. All those plans that I talked about from water, sewer, parks, transportation. They planned for our growth to the extent of the urban growth boundary, which is wider than what's actually in the city. So when someone comes into annex, we actually have a plan and say, we know how big the road is going to be in front. We have a, I've planned for how much water is going to go there, et cetera, based on a land use designation. We've already assumed for those properties. Beyond it, we have nothing and nothing can happen beyond. I can assure you, you can't develop outside city. And there's a darn good reason for it. Makes sense. Whether you like it or not, there's, there's at least a good rationale behind it.
Hey Chris?
Yeah.
Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, urban growth boundaries contain a 20-year supply of, of land?
Yes.
There's a, an analysis done to, to figure out what that 20-year supply is, but that's what they.
Yeah. And we're all familiar with the very difficult, complex process the city went through to expand our urban growth boundary. Pick up lands for development we thought were important. It was brutally difficult and it took whatever 15 years or some insane amount of time and money to get it done.
Any, anytime you're trying to predict into the future, it's, it's a swag. S W A G sophisticated wild ass guess. And the farther you go, the farther you try to predict, the fuzzier it gets.
Well, I thought I would, I thought I would be the first one to use a profanity. I'm glad you beat me to it. I appreciate that. I, I did not lose.
I'm just, I'm just a wealth of info.
Um, conditions, I'm sorry to come back to them again. Um, we always have to be careful when we apply conditions. Any exemption, a condition of approval. I want right away, you need to add bike racks to your, to your project, et cetera. Must be reasonably connected. The term is rational nexus and directly related, roughly proportional to the impacts of that development.
Is it safe to say that if we deny a development, those same conditions apply? I mean, that it has to be rational and roughly proportional?
No, you can deny an application based on one single failure of one criteria. It doesn't meet X. I'm denying that application. And it doesn't go anywhere, assuming it doesn't get appealed and overturned.
But, but, but failure of the criteria, fail, failure to meet.
Yep. They, if they cannot meet it.
If, if, if we feel, if we feel
Yep.
in spite of what you may say, or you may recommend, that the criteria is not met.
Yes.
And, and conditions of approval are attempts to modify the activity to meet the criteria?
That, that's a good question. And Mackenzie, you can jump in because what often happens, and this is a good thing, right? We would all prefer to have a project get approved, provided we can put criteria, put conditions on it to make it meet the criteria. Right? And that's sort of the goal. It's like, oh, we could just deny it. I, I like to tell you, there's a, there is not a bright white line where you say, you know what? I can put a condition on it says, you know, if you chopped off those four buildings, swung a new road around to the west side and got rid of the gas station. I can approve the building. Therefore, I'm going to write a condition of approval that says, if you do blah, 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 blah. This is approved, right? And I think that this happens a lot. My answer, correct me if I'm wrong, Mackenzie, is you can approve it. And say, you are approved. I was going to deny you your application because you didn't need it. But once I put this, whatever this condition is, maybe it's small, maybe it's large. Sometimes they're big. And applicant will say, listen, that commission, that, that condition kills my project. Right? You put that on there, I lose so many units, I can't build it. It's, it, it's a de facto denial. My understanding is you can say, I don't really care about your project. I'm just reviewing what came in and I'm telling you, 240 units doesn't work, but 140 units with a big green space in the back, based on a criteria you can tie it to. You can't just say you're too big. I think you can do that. And my answer to them is that's sour grapes. They're going to have an approval with conditions they don't like. And they say, yeah, it doesn't do me any good. I can't build it. You agree with that, Mackenzie?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I'd also just point out the fact that, as Charlie mentioned, you know, if staff was presenting, you know, certain conditions, um, essentially to support an application and, you know, putting those conditions in place to, you know, ma, ensure that what we believe the application to meet the condition or to meet all the criteria and the planning commission disagreed and said, you know, this condition doesn't go far enough and these are the reasons why. Or, you know, even with this condition, again, it's not meeting the criteria. Um, then I think that that could be a basis for denial, but we would go through that process during the hearing. Um, and we need to have those stated reasons on the record. Um, and I think that that would mostly come up, uh, when we're talking about conditional use approvals and variance approvals. Um, because oftentimes those conditions are mitigating conditions where we're trying to mitigate, you know, maybe some type of, whether it's noise or traffic or, you know, just increased density on a specific site or a type of use. And a lot of times those conditions are meant to, you know, alleviate some of the concerns that would come with just, um, you know, developing outright, whatever the um, development might be, whether that's commercial, industrial or residential. And if the planning commission, you know, didn't think that those conditions went far enough, um, you know, that's And if the planning commission, you know, didn't think that those conditions went far enough, you know, that's where you can step in and say, no, I want to modify the conditions and add this additional piece, then I would feel comfortable approving it. Or, you know, there is no condition that will make me feel comfortable. And this is the stated reasons why, and, you know, we should deny this application.
Yeah, I think of a, so a comment, we often get parking variance criteria, right? Where someone's short, they want to provide less parking than is required under the code. If they don't provide provide an adequate justification and you say, you know what, I'm just not comfortable approving this. I don't, I don't believe they've met the criteria for a variance. Everything else is fine. Everything about the project is fine, but you don't feel comfortable approving the variance. What you're not, what you're saying is I don't approve of the plan that's presented before me. That plan shows 100 spaces and they need 200 spaces. I I honestly believe that if you think you can craft a reasonable condition, right, you should do so. Say, yeah, it just doesn't work for me. I need to see them. I need to see X number of spaces minus minus that. You're going to have to lose the building on the west side and and make those parking spaces. The problem with doing these, you can do that. I would just soon see you say, I'm denying this application. It's it's gone. The I could say the issue we have with that is, once you make that approval, we'll talk about this in a minute. We walk out the door, they're going to come to us in a month and go, okay, here's my plan. I moved the building over here. I got rid of all that. I put in all the parking. I meet all the requirements of the planning commission. But no one is seeing this plan yet, right? Now I get a new building. No one's looked at it with staff. Neighbors didn't see it. You don't even know what it looks like and it's a different plan. I personally don't like that. You know, I would much rather have you say to the applicant, yeah, I'm doing a straw poll up here. You're going to be denied. You can either come back and bring that thing back here, showing a plan that we like, or we're just going to deny your application. It's just easier. That that I don't know if you agree with that, Mackenzie. I, once you start making a lot, once you write a condition that means a lot of changes, then it's like, well, what does that mean for engineering and utilities and landscaping and setbacks? We will still do it. We'll make that change in the back room when they come in because we have to, but it can get, just gets a little hairy for us.
You mean once we?
Yeah, what if you approve something and if you have a condition that means a lot of changes to a plan, my druthers are, you know what, it doesn't work. The plan you gave me that's presented doesn't work because I'm denying your variance. And this is the plan you showed me showed 100 spaces and I'm here to say no.
Well, and 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 I would say too, that and 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 Chris, most of the stuff that that you present to us comes with not a lot of conditions. I've heard stories of plans coming before planning commission with 20 and 30 conditions.
Oh, you mean variance?
Well, conditions on on the approval of of whatever's before us.
Right.
And for the most part, you guys come before us with, I mean, you you got your stock, four or five.
Yeah, we do.
You will build it according to that, but then past that, we get three or four conditions because you've hammered them all out ahead of time. And and for me, that's appreciated. Because we're not trying to sort through, in addition to everything else, we're not trying to sort through all these conditions and how they may apply.
Yeah.
When there's only a few.
I I'll I'll put one more. This is not a pro staff thing. Take it any way you like. Don't ever feel bad going against a staff recommendation. That's a takeaway you can always keep. I will say this, because I've heard this, I've been doing this a long time. I've heard from neighbors and people, you guys always approve every variance and all you ever do is recommend approval for projects. I mean, staff, not not the not commissions and decision makers. Well, there's a reason for that. And I I think it's important to kind of explain that. The vast majority of applications that walk in for pre-application look vastly different than they do when they come before you. They come in and they say, oh, I'm not meeting this. I need 19 variances and I'm not going to meet those and this is terrible. And during that whole process, we, in the most professional way we can, make them understand the criteria. And if they have a variance that we think is justified and that we can support and is the minimal necessary, we're happy to support it. It's pretty rare that you'll see staff stand up and say, this project doesn't meet the code criteria. You need to deny it. And I've written a staff report giving you 15 reasons why you need to deny it. The reason is no applicant ever wants to hear staff say that. They are not stupid. They know that if I stand up and say that, it's a pretty good reach for them to think you're just going to ignore staff's recommendation. You know far more on these 15 ideas of denial and you're just going to approve them overall. And you're going to write your own findings on why it really does and how staff's wrong. The reason that's rare is because applicants know it and it lets us work with them so that when something comes before you, it is something we feel comfortable about. There's disagreement. There's always going to be a condition and we disagree and here's something staff. But for the most part, those things are worked out ahead of time. I think that's a really positive thing. And again, it really comes and it's the reason we may recommend, we don't agree with that variance. And the applicant pushed for it and it's up for you to decide. That's, again, that's fine. It's pretty rare you, I don't think I've twice in my career had to stand up and say, this project doesn't meet any code requirement. We asked them for a traffic report. They told us they're not going to give us one, so I have no idea what it means. And here they are anyway, because they know they're going to sink like a stone. That's important. Just an argument as to why it might feel like all we ever see are approvals. How come I don't see any denies? Well, there's a good reason. It's a waste of the applicant's time. I need to highlight this asterisk at the bottom. Conditions of approval, yeah, they have to be proportional. You can't make them ridiculous. I think you all know that and understand that concept. There's a big asterisk at the bottom that throws everything else in the trash. The applicant can volunteer any condition they want. So a lot of the conditions, I shouldn't did it, unless the applicant stands up and says, I don't agree with that condition of approval that you put on me. They're saying they're okay with that condition of approval. Does that make sense? We we send them ahead of time and talk about all the conditions. So if they stand up and say, I got a problem with these three. And they rattle them off and that I think that's perfectly legitimate and it's a good decision for you to make. What are these conditions? It means the other, you know, 14 items that we are in there, the applicant is fine with and is accepting. They don't get to come back later and say, I never agreed to that, or I need to see a proportionality test. It's too late. They're voluntarily offering that condition. And that makes sense. There's no law that says they can't offer to do more than what's required under the code. They try to do that. They usually stand up and say, here's the things we're doing for your city. And they often add them at the last minute. That's why those are a little bit different. I won't too much, talk too much on these goalpost rule. I think you all know it. We review applications under the rules that apply on the day they submit their application. We just had an application that came in that was that was a conditional use when you saw it. Is that right? Was that permitted use when you saw it? I think that was.
Talking about Stacy Allison apartment?
Stacy Allison.
Right. I'm getting there. It was a permitted use for multifamily and commercial, right?
It was.
At the time they submitted the application, probably 30 days after they submitted their application, we went through a process, you'll all remember, and the city council approved a change to the code that said, you cannot have that in those districts. We do not want multifamily and commercial in those districts where that one's out. They still got to run through the course. That's moving the, you're not allowed to move the goalposts. Again, I'll tell you horrible Florida stories about how they move the goalposts all the time on people so that they can kick them out at the last second. It's a terrible idea. So there's a good reason we don't allow those rules.
So Stacy Allison did qualify?
It did. It was perfectly legal and it went through.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to say that.
No, shortly after they applied, the rules were changed.
Oh, yes.
That would have made it impossible for them to apply. Very shortly after.
Didn't that guy, he had partners all over town that just, it was like he looked for.
On the east side, very similar. He had one on the east side that was very similar, same same situation. You're familiar with the 120-day rule. It's the reason we sometimes push these fast. This is what gives us a kick in the butt that makes us move quickly. I'd be honest with you, it's the bane of planners because it means, you know, I get a final application and I have a week to turn around a staff report and conditions and hear from agencies and vet them with other people and, you know, work through engineering. We have to do all that, quickly get it ready and put in the staff report to you. We move fast because we have to get, 120-day rule, all you have to know about it is means we have to approve an application 120 days from the day it's complete. It's officially in our in our in our graph legally reviewable. No, I love this. Yeah, it will happen. You're going to make decisions you don't like. You're going to approve projects. You say, you know, I just didn't like that project, but I had to approve it. Or, man, that thing was fantastic. I can't believe we wouldn't let them build the extra so and so, but I had to deny it or kick it out. It's perfectly fine. That's your job. Judges do that all the time. We do that constantly. There's things I want to approve that I can't. And I have hardship cases that walk in the door and I'm like, I feel just sick that I can't approve this, this person. They're doing everything right. They've tried everything they can, but legally it's just not going to work and I have to tell them no. It happens. That's my final takeaway. And I'm going to show you one more slide and that's really it. Your jobs, and the reason we do all this, we want a fair and impartial tribunal. You're you're really only allowed to make yes, up and down decisions and apply conditions on discretionary approval criteria. And we're trying to be clear about what those are. We try not to give you things that you don't really have a choice. You can't deny a restaurant in that commercial district. It's it's allowed. You can adjust size and those other issues. You want more Thai restaurants? Too bad. That's not the issue that we're looking at. Discretionary views, you're familiar with them, variances, conditional uses, plans, unit developments, rezonings, annexations. Truly discretionary. You have a lot of discretion to say up or down. Design reviews, not so much, just a straight site plan, size of a parking space. They're providing all the landscaping required under the code. You think it's not enough? Too bad. That's just how it is. Again, that's fairness to everybody involved and predict allows for predictability. I'm going to scroll down this. This is my last slide for you. Because I think people outside that don't understand city hall and development, they kind of miss the process. And I'll pause on a few parts. Typically, this is how we get here, right? Someone has an idea. Dan and everyone at the city is constantly hearing, I want to open a dog wash station. I want to order, open a, you name it. Expand my office building. I want to add a ADU behind my house. They go out, they do research. We give them some help. We give them tax maps. We give them copies of the code. Eventually they say, you know what, this is where this is a go. I'm going to move forward. And they start into legally start into our land use process. We have more of these research ideas that go up and never go anywhere than I could possibly. They just die in the vine. Realtors want to do things. That's fine. Once they're in the land use process, we start with our pre-application conference. It's where we have them come in, they pay, I think it's 560 or 510, Dan. Oh, not even close. 508, $508. They submit, they can submit something on a napkin if they feel like it. What do you want to do? Where do you want to do it? Give me an idea. The better information you give us, the more information we can give you. It's like an initial vetting that we go, that we have them go through. They submit it. They come in, about 10 days later, we call a meeting, we bring them down in Zoom. Now we do it or go to meeting. We have a building official. We have the engineer there. We have the planning official. We have comments from the fire marshal if they're important. We get comments from ODOT if they're on 99 and we give them the best $508 of value for due diligence they will ever, ever get. We do, I can be honest with you, we do more in our pre-application conference reviews than most other cities. I've worked in lots and lots of cities. I can't think of too many cities to provide more information upfront. It means more work in our area. And it often means people get stopped. They're like, geez, your rules and regulations just too tough. Or I needed to build X and I can't do it. We say, I know. I'm glad we found that out now. I don't want you to go $250,000 in the hole and have to find this out at the planning commission that just didn't fly. Those are really valuable for us. Assuming they want to move forward, usually takes, let's say, if it's a big developer, they wait a, you know, two weeks and they're ready. They put together and they submit a full-blown application. We know we need to be, we need an R quad, we need a variance for this. We don't need any variances. I need a design review, et cetera. We addressed everything into pre-application conference because we give them about an eight-page report that says, here's all the things you need to think about. Here's what you need to submit to us to make it good. Submit an application. We're under one of these official legal clocks. We got 30 days to do our review of that application for what we call completeness. That completeness just means that they've addressed everything in our official zoning book, right? You need a traffic report? You didn't give us one? You're incomplete. We kick it back to them and say, when it's complete, you bring it back to us. I don't have to start reviewing it. Under, I don't have to start the next clock. There's another clock to start. And this often goes back. We'll do a review, give a pack. They say, okay, I forgot to give you a landscape plan. Here you go. Here's my landscape. And then we do another 30-day review on top of it. This can sometimes take a couple of months of back and forth.
And then your 120-day starts once it's complete and you.
That's right. The next slide talks about, so there's 120-day clock, should have it earlier, that starts once it's complete. Then we then we're kicking. Once it's complete, I know it's coming here. It's on its track to here. Or if it's just something for a type two, we'll do it already. That means it's, we're going to make a decision on it. They paid their money. I got a full application. I review against criteria, start writing reports. We send it to agencies. We do public notice hearing, assuming it's coming here as an example. We write our staff report recommendation, work with them. We hear from all the other parties, fire, et cetera. Then we present and prepare for our planning commission hearing, that decision or if it's a recommendation, if it's safe, an annexation. Then they move on to council. Before council, we still do the same, revise the staff report, edit, summarize what happens here. Prep ordinances, whatever we need to do for the council, redo the public hearing notices, simple comments, and we have this clock that moves. 120 days, the city, from the day they submit a complete application until the day the council, those, we are done. And this is a final decision, which comes literally down to the time it's signed often. I've had many, many projects done on the 120th day. We have to have it done within 120 days. If we don't, then they can take it to, tell me which court, Mackenzie, please. You know?
So if, yeah, so if they, if, you know, we're not finished in 120 days, then they can go to circuit court and they can get what's called a writ of mandamus. And that basically says, you know, this, because you didn't take action, the court is going to step in and we're going to take action for you and we're going to essentially allow the developer to develop what they have submitted in their application. And it's basically saying, you know, we're not going to judge what's in the application. We're just going to go ahead and improve it because you haven't.
Okay. I was, the last I, I met with Bob Shields, our attorney, and I was telling him, I've never had this happen in work. Haven't had somebody go beyond the 120 days. He has, and it's, again, it's terrible. Essentially what it means is the city loses control of that land use approval. That's the last thing you ever want to have happen. Why on earth would you want a court to make a decision on the project that's happening here? So that's why, that's why we sometimes push you. We'll occasionally say, we got to meet again in two weeks. We got to, I want this done in next week. You're going to have a special meeting. Because I have to factor in the notices and the public hearings that have to happen at the city council level, which might take two meetings. And their schedule might be different and they might be coming up on a holiday. And I might have an applicant who knows we're getting pushed by the 120-day clock and likes pushing us with the 120-day clock. They do this sometimes. Legally, I can't make them extend the clock. The majority of applicants will say, I'm happy to extend it while we keep working out these issues. I want to be a nice partner. I will volunteer to extend that clock and legally they're the only ones who can do it.
So you just have a written extension then?
And I make, we make them give us a letter that says, give us a sense of, say, 30 days while we keep working. Most of them do it. Hard-headed developers won't. They'll say, why would I give you any more time? I've been waiting nine months and I'm fighting tooth and nail. I would love to go and get and file a writ of mandamus and take this to to circuit court and have them make the decision. And it just kind of puts the screws to the city. So they have ways of applying pressure. Now, that happens. Maybe it goes to Luba, maybe it doesn't. I don't want to talk too much about Luba. I'll touch on it just briefly as to how it really impacts you and why it's important for you. I've had lots of cases at Luba before. The vast majority of issues that have that happen is it's usually a developer or a neighbor, an opponent or a proponent, and they're appealing a decision. Most of the time, they're appealing, I'm telling you, it's a procedural issue. The vast majority of ones I've had have been that person had ex parte contact. I know they had it. They they made their decision and they didn't disclose it completely. Or I filed something into the record and it didn't get placed officially into the record. It sat over here and the decision maker didn't know about it. I didn't get a chance to rebut a geotech analysis that was submitted at the last minute to the city council at their third meeting because he handed it over the counter to the recorder and I had an, I should have had an opportunity. It's usually something along those lines. That's where they usually come from. Now, they often include other things like, I still don't think they met this criteria. They made the wrong decision. They applied that code provision wrong. Luba hears these things and it's very, very rare. I can't remember the percentages. I want to say it's about 45, 45, 10 is about the percentages of their decisions where they remand a decision. Maybe it's 60% remand where they say.
That's the most common outcome.
Where they, where they say, city, you made a mistake, a procedural error, or you applied your code wrong, and they send it back. Chew on it again, city, and you have to rehold your hearings and you, and they're usually good about being cleared. You made a mistake by doing this. And the city tries to fix it. Sometimes it's not fixable. Sometimes the city has to just, you know, they try to correct it and they can't. But they'll, it's called remanding it back to the city. The others, they'll uphold the decision that the city made. And they'll say, the city, I understand where the developer was coming from, but you got denied for a good. And they'll say, the city, I, I understand where the developer was coming from, but you got denied for a good reason. I found that they had, they wrote great findings. They ran a perfect hearing. Their findings are connected to their criteria. All the conditions they applied are directly applicable to a criteria. They passed a proportionality test. They're golden. It's approved, just like the city approved it. Rarely, but sometimes they'll actually overturn the decision. They'll say, city, you got it wrong. I'm not remanding it. You clearly violated a state statute and your decision was made, frankly, I think of it as illegally. I'm sure there's a better term for it. Uh, those are rare. They don't happen that much. Um, those are the ones that we absolutely don't ever want to see happen. I never feel awful if something goes to Luba. If someone has enough money, they can file appeal. If they don't like one condition of approval, they can go to Luba and say, I'm gonna go to Luba because I didn't like your one condition. They have the money. They have the time. It'll happen. But it's why we have to make really sound decisions. Um, and our findings have, conditions have to be tight. Assuming none of that happens, they get an approval. I don't know how much of this you all sort of track, but I, I think it's important for you to understand. If nothing else, in terms of conditions of approval that we put together. You know, staff just gets started after that, right? Now we get cooking. Whether it's a subdivision or it's the, what's the bank that they just recently was opened up? I'm trying to think of that. Yeah. So the Oregon State Credit Union gets approved, um, or it's Smith Development with, right, seven hundred and twenty single-family homes or a tiny subdivision or multi-family. Doesn't matter what it is. Once they walk out of here, their next steps are going to what we call engineering public works review. That's when you go, you all get sort of a, a, let's say, plans, uh, engineering drawings that are done at somewhere around, say, sixty percent, right? They spend a lot of time and money doing their engineering drawings to make sure that the drainage works, that the water works, and sewer works, it's going to the right places, that the right depth, it's gonna fit in these areas, easements in the right places. They don't spend, they're not down to the detailed, detailed engineering plans. It costs a lot of money and nobody should spend that much money upfront to find out that they don't approve. Now they come up with these very specific plans. And there's usually conditions of approval from this side of the tide of it, right? And they have to make sure that they meet them. So staff's involved at that level. And then if it needs to get a, if they need a subdivision, they have to go to the county approves. The county is the one who actually subdivides property in this, in the state. Cities don't subdivide property. When we get a subdivision, you're just doing technically, it's called a preliminary subdivision approval. They take it. They leave here. They go to the, they have to go to the county and formally record a plat with the county to create those laws. And do that, we have our own internal process that we file them through, to make sure it passes all of our rules. Because we have a whole separate set of regulations, regulations for those final subdivisions we have to follow. Even if it's, say, the, the, um, Oregon State Credit Union. They're gonna have to file lots of easements. They may have to go to the city council. They have to be recorded at the, at the, at the county as well. Um, they do these complex engineering drawings. Then, once they get done with that, they get a big seal of approval. Works for me. I like their sidewalks. The curb heights are right. Your storm drains are perfect. Your manholes are the right elevation and the size of them spot on. And those are complicated plans. They take a long time. And I love every single street tree and the species and where they're going and where the mailbox is going. All of these things are shown on these detailed plans. Then they get a blessing. They get a stamp of approval from us. Pay some more money and then they start constructing their improvements. Then they start building. When you look around, something's being built. There's a reason it takes sometimes nine months for something to go from, man, I got that thing approved. I haven't seen any work done. It takes a long time. And developers only ha- always have the money. You know, the big ones do. But smaller ones are kind of, they, they just get it when they can, right? And they just kind of chip their way along. They build the streets. They build the sidewalks. They put in the water, sewer, et cetera. Everything in the public realm. After that, sometimes we'll allow permit review to be con- uh, at the same, to go on at the same time as public improvements. Then they submit their actual building permits, which is every, you know, it all is included in the building permit, right down to the, you know, I was called the, the depth of the insulation in your attic's gonna be in there. Every little piece of, every nail, every fitting is gonna be included in those pieces. That gets reviewed. That gets reviewed. It might go to fire. We have plumbing and electrical that go to the county for their review. We review the other, other sets of building permit plans here. Then they get those done. So they're out doing their construction. They're putting in the improvement. They got building plans coming back and forth. Dan's reviewing them to make sure they meet all the code conditions of approval we had here. Anything on the plat, because all your conditions get chased and followed up at, at all these different levels underneath. Dan's making sure the sidewalk width is eight feet at that spot and that there's a buffer of so-and-so and that there's a park bench in this spot. And all those things are shown on there. Then they actually start their, you know, what we call vertical construction. Construction starts on the site. Now, once those building plans are all approved and polished and perfect, now they can start building up and you start seeing construction. Once that's done, they call for inspection. Dozens and dozens of inspections from all sorts of different people, from county to electrical to our public works and engineering department to, of course, our buildings. Once that's done, they can go out and get there. Yep, you got a final CO. It's finished. City, that, that's the reason thing. You see the schools still sort of working. You guys approved the school project a long time. It takes a long time for these things to get done. When you see something go up and a building gets built, I think the Oregon State Credit Union slew them, for as long as I'm concerned. That thing happened really fast. I bet it was a year after your approval, they opened their doors. That's pretty good. We're not slow. There's a lot to do and we have to make sure it's right. We can afford this many mistakes out there when something happens on a fire-like safety issue on a house. No one goes to me and says, well, I'm glad you got those other fifty-seven projects done. Too bad that building collapsed for the fire department couldn't get in. We have to be perfect on all of this. So there is a reason that they, that feels like we're dragging our feet, our feet. We aren't. We do our very best. But I, I just wanted to bring this up because the conditions of approval that you apply are usually prior to the first engineering permit, we'll sometimes see. Prior to the first, prior to building permit issuance or prior to building permit submitted. What we never like to see, this is just my personal rant, we never like to see these prior to CEOs. We sometimes put them in. The school district likes them, by the way. Um, and you're welcome to do anything you want. I'm, I'm, this is my little, I'm sorry, little aside, because every time I get a condition of approval that says prior to CEO, when that CEO's coming, they literally have people, we call it the moving vans coming in, right? They've gone through a long process. Whoever that developer is has spent a lot of money and they have made exactly nothing yet because they can't get the Oregon State Credit Union in. Like, Oregon State Credit Union's losing money. There's no customers walking in the door. And they're like, I'm ready to open my door. And I say, yeah, I'm sorry. Dan here is gonna hold you up, even though you've gone through all this because you still didn't, I don't know. Give me one, Dan.
We need two trees in front of you.
Yeah, I'm still missing those two trees. And they're like, you're not really gonna hold me up because of, I don't have, I got ninety-seven trees in the lot. And I say, yeah, and you're missing two. Frankly, we look a little silly. I don't want to look silly out there, stopping, you know, a multimillion-dollar development thing going on because they don't have two trees. On the other hand, if I don't get those two trees, they ain't gonna put those two trees in because that big red ribbon, that's my last chance to go in there and start getting anything out of it. Just my little aside, why we avoid continuing things out to CEO as much as possible. You know, you didn't do those off-street sidewalk improvements. That's a lot of money. If we're at CEO and they're still, you know, four months from getting that construct, construction done, put in the sidewalk, you get, and work with ODOT, that's way too late. And it's, I'm telling you, it's really hard for me to say no. I will. But then we look terrible. And I'm in front of the newspaper going, oh, you stopped them because they didn't put in a four-foot sidewalk and now school's not open. Yeah, we don't want to do that. I don't want to get put in that situation.
CO is conditions of occupancy?
Pardon, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a certificate of occupancy.
Oh, certificate. So.
Means they can officially move in. Yeah. So certificate of occupancy says, we've gone through, done a final inspection. And it's officially, it's legally, now you can move into this. You can open this up for business. You can have the public in this building.
So somebody goes out and there's a checklist or something and?
Yeah, we do it over and over and over. The last, the last thing they get is an actual, it's a real certificate. You'll see them hanging on walls in, in businesses. They're proud of it. Once that happens, we don't go in there again. And that's why it's important. It's not like we come in and go, hey, wait a second. I don't tell the tenant, yeah, you know, you didn't put in that. He's like, I don't know what you're talking about. Man, get out of here. I got my CO. You can't tell me. That's our last gasp. Sorry, that was my last comment. That's more for Dan because he's often has to be the bearer of that kind of bad news at the end of the day. There are lots of opportunities in here for them to do their improvement. It's their goal to push them to the bitter end.
I hope you don't notice.
Yeah. Believe me, we do inspections because they often hope we don't know. The vast majority of people that we work with, developers are fantastic. If they make a mistake, it's because they don't know. Not all of them. We know, we knew who they are. Um, that was it. I was gonna wrap it up. Um, I was gonna talk more on zoning code and things, but now it's not time for that. You're all much more familiar. I have a different one for the council where I talk more about what the zoning code is and what chapters involves. What a, what a condition of use is. You all know what condition uses are. That wraps up what I had. I hope it was useful. I don't mind going back occasionally and talking about, again, the genesis and the reason we have these rules. There is a good reason. I'm not gonna defend them. The details of them. I can't stand the, being forced to do things by the state that I think we're already doing. But I, but we have to. Uh, overall, there's a good reason for it. You can vote if you don't like. Okay, that was it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Look at, I almost forgot, Dan. Can I literally take five more minutes? It's not a training. I think it's very helpful. I want you all to know, but I look at this because Dan, Dan is the one who almost exclusively keeps this up. It's not, he's in charge of it. Um, if he's been delegating out, I didn't know. We keep on our website. It's called a current project page. You can just go into current projects under our, under our, our office. I'm really proud of this because getting in from, we get call, calls all the time from whether it's neighbors, real estate investors, or someone wanted to know what's going on. And we keep, I like this map. So we have a map out here. It shows what's going on. And you can click in anywhere and say, you know, I saw a construction going on here at, where am I? Here's, here's development going on out here at Tom Tenet, right? What's going on in that vacant lot across from the Denny's? Well, we had a design review for the Woodburn Urgent Care on Tom Tenet Drive, right? Here it is on a map. You can zoom in and find it and, and if you click on it, you can get the details of it. I hope they're in here. So here's the final decision. Date, I'm gonna open it. It's eight megabytes. There's a link to your meeting where you heard it, approved that urgent, this urgent care that was, yeah, it's across from Denny's, what's on the same park in my hand, the bank.
Behind, behind Columbia Bank.
Right, it's right behind the transit center. Um, and you can see the details. There was a PIA they submitted. Uh, there's the final decision. It's the whole piece in there with the plans and everything it goes with. There's a description, the designer view, street exception for four thousand per foot urgent. Uh, we also have active projects, right? So this one's out here, right? This is the one that we're working on. You just made a recommendation on it, went to the council. This is the annexation for the east side apartments. There's where it is. You can click in, look, even if you don't know the address, you can find it on here. What is it? It's two hundred and twenty apartments across nineteen buildings, blah, blah, blah. Here's all the detailed information anybody could possibly want. And if they're still lost, they can call us and ask us questions. But I think these, this kind of information is really helpful. I, I like that this is out there and people can see what's going on.
So we can just go and look it up on the city website?
You can. Yep. It's all public information. Um, there's a traffic impact analysis. There's a revised traffic impact analysis they submitted. Site plan with open spaces. All, all kinds of details. ODOT commentary. It's important to be really transparent and open. And this, I'll be frank, this takes a lot of work. We have to keep this up. There's a lot of projects in here. In fact, we keep them up. We even put in public projects. I'm sorry. Yeah.
There's some, there's a little X put out to the, to the east there.
Oh, that's, that are treatment plant. Let me take a look.
Oh, the treatment plant?
Yep. Yeah, it's outside the city. Yep, there it is. If you're interested in the water treatment plant, digester, cleaning and mixer up. So we put some public works projects in here too. They're not, they don't involve you, but the public wants to know why Hayes Street is getting ripped up. What's the plan for Hayes, right? Well, we have those plans in here and you can just click. That's why we include some public projects. That's probably more Nita up here. I don't even know what this is off the top of my head. Oh, right, Gem Equipment that was approved. So it's, it's a really good website. If you are asked, hey, what's going on? I don't understand. You can send them to the website. It's not hard to find. It's called current projects. Woodburn. If you Google that, it goes right.
Okay.
And again, Dan spends a lot of time on it. I appreciate it.
Uh, Colin does as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not just me.
I hope it's getting used. I want more people to use. I'm just trying to get that out. I apologize for that. That is my end of my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Um, thank you very much. I think it's good that, that we review this stuff from time to time, how we got here. Mackenzie, thank you for hanging out tonight and contributing. We appreciate it. Is there any business from the commission? And then updates from staff?
Uh, I was just gonna mention that, I'm looking at you again, Dan. We do not have anything for the next meeting, dude. I think everybody, yeah, we're not gonna have a, uh, February, someone open a calendar.
I think it's the eighth.
We'll send out an email. Yeah. We're not gonna have a February eighth planning commission meeting, right? We don't have any quasi-judicial items. So you have it all. I do have a pretty busy spring. I know for a fact we have several more annexations, few residential's that are definitely becoming April, May. Fairly significant. Size complicated. Oh, maybe even, we're gonna bring you back a, some modifications on the Stacy Allison project. That's in, in the works. Very, very minor modification for you to look at. Shouldn't, shouldn't take a lot of time.
So, so what happened at the last council meeting?
So at the, at our council meeting on Monday evening, they heard the east side annexation. That was the one I just clicked on, two hundred and twenty units. I call it across from the Safeway, a little north and east of the Safeway, um, off two eleven. Uh, they, because it was an annexate, it was an annexation as well as a design review. It had one variance for some compact spaces. I think that was it. But because it was involved in annexation, it requires the city council approval. Only the city council can change the city boundaries. Um, and they, at the end of the night, they punted on it and postponed it. They had concerns about traffic at two eleven and, uh, ninety-nine. The, I don't want to talk too much about it because it is, it is still an active quasi-judicial case, which technically could come back down to you if it gets pushed back down from the city council. At this point in time, they heard the presentation. The vast majority of concerns by the council related to traffic. Not unusual. That's a troublesome intersection. There's capacity issues there. And how much of a contribution, when and how that contribution would be made by the applicant was the gist of the council's concerns. They asked the applicant to go back and try to fine-tune the details of when improvements would happen there and what they would look like. Sound about right, Mackenzie?
Andy has to try and find out.
He does. It's, so I, I. I never have a problem repeating to people. Ninety, all of ninety-nine and all of two eleven, two fourteen, et cetera, is ODOT property. It's owned and operated by ODOT. Those are ODOT facilities. The city doesn't control them. We don't make improvements to them. I often tell people, we can't fix a pothole in that street if we wanted to. We're not allowed to do it. So any improvements that happen out there have to go through and be approved by ODOT. They work with us, but they aren't our decisions to make. And that, that makes it more difficult for this applicant. I'm sure they're gonna have to work through ODOT. And I think they, I think they gave him five weeks or six weeks before they came back. And he wanted more time to try to figure it out. That's all I know about it at this point. And I'm sure he's working on, trying to get more details from ODOT.
Can I ask you something?
Yeah.
Why did it come to us first about the annexation? The council has to approve it first and then, you know.
Right. So, so because it's an annexation, you're required to do a, provide a recommendation before it goes to the city council. So the council gets your recommendation.
Right.
Right.
If they're the, well, that's sort of it.
That was all I had, sir.
Okay. Unless there's something else, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourned.
Who can second it? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
It'll be nice to see you.
Thanks, Chris. Good night, everybody.
I haven't seen you how long, Chris? When's the last time? I'll bet it's, it's been a year.
Yeah. I don't think it's been that long.
I've lost some hair. I lost, sorry, Chris.
Thank you all.